Alright ladies and gentlemen, welcome back. Night City Council is in session. My name is John John the Wise and I have with me the Honorable Mayor of Balance Town himself, my co-host with the most, James Hutt from Martell Sorin Games. James, how are you?
John John has a lot of it too. He's just being, uh, he's just being nice.
I'm nothing without you, James. You're everything. If this was the Titanic and it was at the end and I would make room on that door for you. It was a door, right? It was like a floating door. At the end of Titanic.
Why would you be on a door? I'm already on the life raft.
Oh, that's
Why didn't you leave the boat when they asked you to?
Yeah, I'm shivering and dying and I'm like, I'm gonna save the spot for James. Little do I know, you got your little yellow life jacket on.
Right, right. I mean, I'm in one of those ponchos, eating one of the lemon flavored, um, the lemon flavored utility rations or whatever.
Oh man, talk about a dark future dude.
I've wanted to eat one of those for the longest time. The, um, the official like lemon flavored calorie ration.
What is that? That's just supposed to be like a meal stick basically, right?
Yeah, it's essentially, it's calorie mate, if you, if you know that, but, um, but ever since I saw it and it said pleasant lemon flavor on it. I gotta figure out how pleasant.
Yeah, I don't know about pleasant.
I'll be the judge of that.
Yeah, yeah. Anytime they assume that it's, uh, you know, they presume that it's pleasant, that's a red flag for me. Uh, but hey guys.
When they, uh, they have new packaging and they say same great taste, you're like, are you sure about that?
Same as my grandpappy's meal rations. Alright, sounds good. Well guys, you're not here to hear about meal rations or anything like that. You're here to talk about cyberpunk. And today, we have two awesome DLCs to talk about. The first being titled The 12 Days of Chumba. Where is it? I lost it. 12 Days of Gun Miss.
Yes, the Gun Miss. Gun Miss has come.
Mm-hmm. And then right after that, we're gonna talk about Derek Sylar's Guide to Elflines Online, which is
You're supposed to pronounce it while cringing.
Yeah, see, I said Derek Sylar and James went, actually, James actuallyed me.
It's supposed to sound like saying it makes you upset.
They, Da- Da- Derek Sylar.
Derek.
Di- Derek. Alright, anyway, let's, uh, let's start with something. First of all, uh, on behalf of myself, I wanna wish you all a happy holidays and James, I'm sure you wanna do the same.
Oh, absolutely. Thanks for watching the show and happy holidays.
Yeah, happy holidays guys. Uh, I hope it's the holidays have been going well for you guys. Thank you so much for supporting, listening to this show, being a part of this show, for your questions, everything. You guys have been really positive and James and I are are blessed to have such an awesome audience and community and we just hope you and your family and your loved ones are having a wonderful holidays. And why not start the holidays with some guns?
Eleven of them. I have one melee weapon.
So, uh, James, why don't you tell us a little bit about why you guys wanted to make this DLC and then let's get into the DLC itself.
Okay, so this is the 12 Days of Gun Miss and, um, sort of the fantasy of it is that there is a, um, netrunner named Santa. Um, who has, uh, Robin Hooded a bunch of these, uh, gunmakers and has released their schematics, their precious schematics, um, to the public and, um, that's the, that's the backstory as to why these guns are being released. So the schematics are being released and then techs in the city are printing them out. And, um, that's why a lot of them, you've seen before if you're a 2020 fan. Um, and they are different than they were before. Um, but we did the in-house conversion, so, uh, we converted them with an eye to making them wholly different gameplay experiences. Um, so no gun does the same thing as another gun and hopefully you could in your head read one of these and go, I think I know a character that would use this, or for my next cyberpunk character, I wanna use that. Um, that's the sort of goal, that's what you're gonna get out of the document. Um, and, uh, other than that, it's 11 cool guns, uh, that we kind of picked for the ones that, um, A, had art, um, so that we can show off some of the cool old art. We did like a blueprint treatment to it. Um, uh, Jay Gray did a great job on that. Uh, and, um, B, were some of the more recognizable guns from 2020 so that we could get that nostalgia vibe. Uh, we could bring back the stuff that you wanted us to bring back. Um, so A, you don't have to convert it yourself and B, you, these are more conversions with an eye for the new game design of the addition. Um, because we didn't wanna like sprinkle these into future books. Like piecemeal, like, oh, and you get the Crusher in this book and then this book you get the Stolba Boy. Uh, we wanted to just give it to y'all upfront so you can play with it now and, um, we, uh, we don't know if we're gonna do another Gun Miss, but who knows? Maybe the, maybe it'll be a yearly thing. People really seem to like it. Um, John John, do you have a favorite?
Well, first of all, I wanna say the whole, on the nostalgia factor, the, I love when you guys did, like when you did Old Guns Never Die and then you did something like this, bringing back all the 2020 guns, cuz that was one of the biggest appeals for me getting into Cyberpunk 2020, was seeing all these cool guns with different names and being like, oh, I can have that, I can do that with it and everything. So, um, I love that you guys are taking that care and taking stuff from the past and bringing it to the future. It also is awesome because it's like, it's old tech, you know? That, I, I noticed a lot of them are exotic and I think it's for that reason, right? It's like, oh, you're not gonna get this uh, unless you know a guy that has the printer or, or the schematics to print it, right?
A lot of the times the exotism is due to that. Um, but mostly, uh, if we have a new gameplay effect and we don't want it to like cross into other stuff, we'll make it exotic just for balance reasons. Um, there is in-world reasons as well. These are old guns, they don't accept new attachments. Um, ammunition has changed. Um, but, uh, I mean, there are some guns that have almost unique ammo types in this one. What we wouldn't wanna do is in about a year and a half, we didn't wanna look down and say, this gun with this ammo and this attachment from three different books combined to create the Triforce of Power.
Yeah.
Um, we, we didn't want that and so it's a, it's an eye toward balance in the future because we wanna do this edition for a long. We're very excited to keep the train moving.
Yeah, we've all wanted this edition for a long time. I'm with you, man. Uh, but my favorite thing about this is the, uh, is, is the 12 Days of Gun Miss song that we have here.
Yes, I wrote that. I was very, I was very happy.
I mean chef's kiss dude. And then you even have the little nursery rhyme or the, the story of 'twas the night before Gun Miss under that.
I wrote the 12 Days of Gun Miss thing and I wrote it out, a whole thing out. I'm like, this is way too short to be the introduction to a thing.
Yeah.
So I alphabetized all of the things and rewrote it so that it would serve as kind of like a table of contents.
Yeah.
For what you're about to read.
I love it, man. I love it. Uh, but if I have to pick a favorite, I'm gonna go with the Militec Crusher. A pistol-sized shotgun was developed during the Second Central American Conflict for closer combat and room sweeping duties. I mean, you gotta, you gotta love a little mini shotgun.
That's right. Um, just for, uh, just for the info sake, so cool now, I do this hand motion.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, just for info sake, the Militec Crusher is the gun from the original 2077, um, trailer. Um, it's also, uh, a really popular gun from 2020 and so we had, uh, we had to make it playable. Um, it was, uh, I, originally when I was writing Old Guns Never Die, I'm like, ah, I gotta do the Crusher as the example, but then I wanted to go with an example that was a little easier. And, uh, this just, I've been just itching to put the, the Crusher out and, uh, I'm glad we can finally get it to you now.
Man, an exotic, very heavy pistol, six-shot capacity and can fire shotgun shell ammunition exclusively. So that means you can get some really nasty shells in there.
Yeah, you get basic, um, it fires basic shotgun shells, but something, another cool part about these designs, um, is whenever there's like, oh, it can only fire basic shotgun shells. It's like until you take it to attack and then you're firing incendiaries, um, you get to have your fun. Um, techs really just let you have your cake and eat it too.
Well, it says, uh, shotgun shell ammunition, so I assume that it can take special shotgun ammunition too.
No, it's an exotic.
Okay, gotcha.
The exotic distinction specifies only, um, basic ammunition. Which means it can fire normal and, um, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head if rubber is a acceptable ammo type for shell.
Interesting.
I know rubber slugs are a thing. Um, a couple of my friends have been shot with.
Oh, man. You got some friends, man.
Ah, well.
Well, um, James, do you have a favorite?
Um, oh man, you took the Crusher. Um,
Uh, that was your favorite. We all liked the Crusher.
I mean, it's the, that's the jewel of the, that's the jewel and the crown of this document.
Well, if you don't have one, I can do, I can do another one.
I like the, I like the, um, I like the Stolba Boy.
I was gonna do that one dude.
I know. Um, why, why don't you, you read it out because I love to hear the sound of your voice.
Oh, well, thank you very much. I'm honored to do so. Stolba Boy ST5 Assault Rifle. First of all, the look of it, it looks like the Famas. It has that like kind of, uh, long stock and kind of mixed with, uh, what's that other thing called? Anyway, whatever, this is not a gun podcast. It's 100 eddies. As, the Crusher was only 500 eddies. That means your local fixer can source it for you. This one is 100 eddies.
Yeah.
And it is a poor quality exotic assault rifle, which I love that. I love that it's a poor quality exotic. And it has a 20-shot capacity. While jammed, firing the weapon has a 50% chance of still working as normal, but which also clears the jam. Amazing. If you lose the coin flip, the weapon fails to fire and your action is used, but the jam is still cleared. I mean, this thing is a workhorse, right? Despite being an exotic weapon, it is still capable of loading non-basic ammunition. Wow, so you were just talking about that.
Yeah, so that, that, um, still capable of non-basic ammunition is the, um, that's a special power of this, of this one. Um, it's meant to be like an alternative start gun. Um, for if you like, I just want an assault rifle, but I don't want to like put attachments on it or upgrade it later, or I don't wanna spring the 1000 to get that excellent quality version. Um, when you just want a gun that will work and you don't necessarily want to, uh, deal with the poor quality version, which is also available. Um, it's a, it's an eye toward also a great weapon for NPCs to carry.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's great for a booster gang. If you find like crates of these, the, you could sell it to any booster gang, especially the ones that live in combat zones that need to have reliable weapons. You just go and say, I got a shipment here for you, man. I got old reliable.
Yeah.
The ST5.
Um, I'm a, I'm a fan.
Yeah, so, so that's just two, uh, as James said, there's 13 of them, right? There's 12 and a melee weapon?
There's 12 and a very special melee weapon, which we gotta talk about now that we've been singling it out so much.
Of course. So ta- talk to me about it.
It's a chainsaw.
It's a chain knife.
Chainsaw knife.
Chain, I am I, chain knife.
True.
You want me to give some info on it?
Read it for the people.
500 eddies. It is designed and manufactured in Israel. The chain knife saw a great deal of use by the Mossad agents in the 2020s. Shaped somewhat like a survival knife, this handheld combat saw can still chew through armor like cheesecloth. So what does this mean? It's a one-handed exotic medium melee weapon with a rate of fire of one, as opposed to the normal two.
Mm-hmm.
As an action, it can be revved up and once revved, it will remain so until it is dropped, stowed, or until revved down as an action. While revved, the chain knife is an excellent quality, one-handed, exotic, very heavy melee weapon. Ah, I see what you did there. So if it's off, it's a medium melee weapon with a rate of fire of one. If it's on, not, not that good, but once you turn it on, it's a excellent quality, that means plus one to hit. One-handed exotic, very heavy melee weapon. That's 4D6, ignoring half armor and it's one-handed as opposed to two-handed. So you could have two of these bad boys go around slashing neck throats.
I mean, there's still one R, there's still one R left, but, uh,
Yeah, exactly.
You can, you can do such things. I guess in case you get disarmed or if there are style reasons to have two chainsaws, uh,
You could throw one. You throw one and then you use the other to slice.
True. Um, I think it un-revs when you throw it.
Oh, well, you know, it's all about style, right?
Yeah, I would allow it to, I would allow it to stay revved.
You, you tape it. If you're a tech, you do a jury rig, you tape the handle, boom, toss it. There you go. Well, uh,
I wanna lock the thing into place and throw it.
First of all, I'm, I'm very partial to this because I'm a big fan of Warhammer 40k. And we got the chain sword. You know, the chain knife is just a few years away from being a chainsword.
True, attack. It only needs attack now.
Yeah, exactly. Just put this on a pole. Chain spear. Hey.
There you go.
There you go.
Um, I think there's a, um, I mean, it's not technically a bolter, but there's a pneumatic bolt gun.
That's right, yeah. I saw that. Pneumatic bolt gun. Uh, that's like an air compressed gun, right? It's like, it's like a shotgun.
It's a sniper rifle that fires arrows.
Yeah, that's right. Four rotating barrels.
Yeah. And, um, that lets you, that lets you do some funky crazy stuff at sniper rifle ranges for a little less damage, cuz it does fire uh, 46 rounds instead of 56.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's just fun, man. It's fun to have something like this in your arsenal to be able to give to your players and for the, you could just be like, yep, look it up, here's the stats. Boom. Free love for, for your table. So, uh, there's more, but I think we should just leave it to you all to check out.
We only got through almost half. There's a whole nother half.
Yeah, yeah.
Go enjoy it. Uh, the, the DLCs, there is something we do need to talk about, about the DLCs. It's the price.
Oh, yeah, we, we're, you know, first of all, I wanna apologize that we haven't been clear on this matter. So James, why don't you just tell the people the price of these DLCs? Once and for all, I think it's better if they hear it from Martell Sorin officially.
They're free. If you go to our website, you can download.
Yeah.
Now we do sell Interface Red, which is the first compilation. Plus a, uh, a article that's exclusive to that printed version, um, called, uh, All About Drones. But all the DLCs, including the ones in Interface Red Volume 1, are all on our website and they are all free. Now this means you don't have to pay for them because they are free. They cost zero dollars.
Well, I hope that was clear enough for you guys. Uh, once again, we apologize. If you had any confusion about it, let us know in the comments so we can rectify it in the future.
Uh, yeah, and, uh, if you, uh, if you like the DLCs, if you in particular, if you have a favorite gun, put it in the comments. I'm gonna try to read the comments. Get an idea of what everybody's favorite gun in the, in the Gun Miss is. Uh, it's mini sample size and, uh, I know if you're here, you're here for life.
That's right. And when you tell us about your favorite gun, tell us how we would find it. How do we find it in your universe, in your game? Is it hidden in a, in a storage container underneath a pile of, of broken down cars? Or is it in the backseat of some, uh, fixer's car when you hop in as payment?
I like it. Do that too.
Uh, any of those things. That just came off the top of my head.
Hey, I like it. It's cool.
Yeah, so, let's move on to the nitty gritty. We're gonna go fantasy on you. Ladies and gentlemen, the best MMO in the cyberpunk universe is Elflines Online and that is undebatable. That is just a fact. Alright, and we have a guide to Elflines Online from none other than Derek Sylar.
That's right.
And James, first of all, I wanna tell you that I'm a big fan of you being a big fan of all of this.
Well, uh, I, I like using it as an, as an opportunity to, uh, you know, point the stick at funny things. Um, but to also sort of, um, you know, I was, I made video games before I worked for Martell Sorin. Uh, and, um, it's fun to poke fun at video games sometimes. Um, especially from the idea of what might they be in the dark future and, uh, Elflines is a lot about that. This one in particular is, um, now, audience participation, again, um, raise your hand if you played World of Warcraft.
I believe all of you are raising your hands.
Right. Um, does anyone remember like going on a forum about World of Warcraft?
Yeah, yeah, I remember. Before Reddit and all that.
Be an ad for like a leveling guide. Get to level 60 in under a month with my leveling guide. This is the app. This is an in-world leveling guide written by someone named Derek Sylar, who you might re- remember is the narrator of all of the Elflines Online content.
Dude, do you remember that website, Game, Game FAQs?
Trying. He is trying out there.
Oh, he, this guy quit his job for this?
He got fired.
Oh, okay. Well, you know what? He quit before they could fire him. So how about that?
Nah, he, he got fucked.
That's not the story though.
They closed the whole store.
God damn, poor guy. Uh, I was gonna say, remember gamefaq.com, game facts? That's what this is.
Game facts.
Anytime I went to those, I'm like, man, who made, who spent the time to do this? Like,
Back in the day, I printed out the entire Wind Waker game facts.
Oh, wow.
I used like 80 plus pages of printer paper.
Oh, man.
That was not a good idea.
No, no, it's not a good idea. Your parents are gonna kill you.
Just buy the prema guide at that point.
Yeah. I did, I use it for, uh, Final Fantasy VII, man. Trying to get through Final Fantasy VII, getting all the secrets. I'm like, what? And some of those secrets, it's like, how am I supposed to know as a kid back then that you're supposed to talk to this guy, take that item, go to this part of town, go fishing and then, anyway.
Right, right. How was I supposed to know? I had to press A on the wall.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, so this is multiple things. One, it's a fiction piece. Um, there's a, there's a, there's a story in the beginning. Um, now that we've gotten a couple in, I've been able to string together a connected narrative in each of the Elfline stories with the introductions. And sometimes conclusion stories. Um, so, two, um, it's a, it's just a straight-up description of all of the dungeons and content that your players might do in Elflines Online, which you can fold into your adventure. Three, um, it's a bestiary. Uh, there's a bunch of, uh, Elflines Online specific monsters like flying heads uh, and bear wolves and, um, other, other things. There's stats for dragons. Um, there's also stats for elite versions of every enemy and boss versions of every enemy. Uh, so it is, it is a game in miniature, which is sort of the theme of the Elflines.
Yeah.
Um, bits. Um, the fourth thing that it is, is it's items for your Elflines characters. That's right. Loot.
Loot, baby. You know, that's why you play MMOs.
Um, and, uh, there's everything. So it's all the dungeons, all the bosses, and it's the raids too. Um, up to and including the final raid with, uh, a giant floating head above a volcano. Um, which I think you'll like.
Oh, it's wonderful, man. Honestly, the, what's funny is this DLC reminds me of the Night City Sourcebook. Where there was a map, the map was labeled, uh, like A, it says here, A, Elfhold, B, Hero's Point, blah, 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 down the line. And then there is, from the, from the perspective of Derek Sylar, he's saying it as if like, hey, I went through this game and I got all the content. I'm like mythic, epic, legendary, all the way geared out. Let me tell you guys how to get through this. And then you as a game master, as you're reading it, it's basically subtly giving you hints like have this monster at this location and this is what the encounter is gonna be like for your players.
It isn't a bunch of adventure. It's just not like a 60-page document.
Yeah.
Uh, with every encounter and maps. No, you're, you're gonna have to do that yourself.
Yeah, but there's enough, there's enough information there.
Wise to what you wanna do.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think you can throw it together based on the info. Um,
Why don't we read, uh,
There's a giant world, I forgot to mention the world map. That's the coolest part.
That is literally the coolest part.
We made, can you put it on the screen? Is there any way?
It's been on the screen if people are watching, so don't worry. Oh, you mean like, uh, for you to see?
No, I, I mean, at least.
Don't worry.
Okay, yeah, look at the map. Isn't it great?
They've seen it. You're seeing it again. You've already seen the map and you're seeing it again.
I freaked out. I freaked out. Um, we have fantastic map artists on this. Um, they did a great job.
Oh, it's beautiful. It's a beautiful map.
Looks exactly like I wanted it to. I, wait, lemme here.
I wanna frame it, man.
Let me get some fun stuff.
Go for it. I'll keep the people entertained. Hey, everybody, how you doing? This is John John the Wise. Just want you to know that we really appreciate you. And, uh, we hope you play some Elflines Online in your cyberpunk world. You know, why don't you, you have your players play against another clan that's paid to win and they have all this like epic loot? And then your players hack the game and ruin their life, you know, you grief the, the pay-to-win guys. Anyway, here we go. On the screen you are seeing, what is that, James?
This is my original drawing for the Elfline.
Hell yeah. That's not bad for a little sketch.
We have, uh, this is the continent level one.
Ah.
And I folded in the dungeons. We've got the
Wow.
Final, the final version. And look at all that. You know, we've got, this is a, this is a beta version.
Oh, man. That's amazing. I see all the stages.
Look at that and then look at the one on screen. You see how close that is?
It's so close. It's like pretty much on, on par with it and it has even the like little islands and stuff all around. It's just genius.
There are little, little icons for each of the different raids and, um, dungeons and they're unique.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a beautiful map. So, uh, you guys would basically be able to use this map. Why don't we read some of these points of interest? To give people an idea on exactly what we're getting. So I'll read the first one. Uh, you start in Elfhold. It's a, it's labeled as a city. You'll spawn just outside of Elfhold on a fresh elf, basically new character. You'll want to do the tutorial quest, but break off at the point where you would first enter the miasma. People constantly camp this area to kill new players. So instead, make your way up to Hero's Point. So the way you would present this to your players, in my opinion, is you would have somebody in the game that's kind of a guide. Maybe you have an NPC that's read this guide. And he's interacting with your players and he says, hey, let's not go to the miasma and says, hey, look over there, perception check from your players. They look. They notice that there's a bunch of high-level baddies waiting in the bushes to PvP and gank some newbies. And instead, your NPC guide guides them to another path to Hero's Point. So that's what I mean when it gives you enough information that you can have some kind of obstacle and interaction with your players to get them started with this. Shall I read another one or you got one?
Oh, I got that one. Um, I wanna read a dungeon from later in.
Okay.
Valley of Cinders.
Oof.
Lowest point in the Scorched Lands where miasmic lava rivers terminate in a grand lava fall into darkness. The Valley of Cinders is notorious for its horrible drop rates. A rank-six dungeon. Its quirk is that each time you run the dungeon, the final bias behind the lava fall is chosen randomly from a list of 10 possible options, all with their own loot tables. In practice, that just means that if you're looking for a specific drop, you have a 1 in 10 chance that the boss you wanted to show up is there. And then you need to get lucky. What's worse is that it's not uncommon for players to leave upon discovering the final boss isn't the one they wanted, instead of helping kill it. Don't be that elf.
Ah.
Has this happened to anyone else?
Yeah, yeah, you get to
This has happened to me.
Yeah, you get to the boss. It's not the boss they wanted, so everyone leaves and you can't kill the boss.
Exactly.
Yeah. I love that it's 1 in 10 cuz that just means you roll a D10. You get a 1 or you can decide whichever one is the number, 1 or a 10, and you get, you get the boss to pop.
Yeah.
That's nice. I like it. That's nice. I like that. And I like the idea that you, maybe your players group up with another group that want to go take down this boss. And then when you get there, they betray the group and turn and run. And the players are like, what the hell? We're stuck here and now we gotta fight this boss on our own. And that's a dynamic little action thing going on right there.
You do the, the classic of, and they log off, and then it's like, but you're two or three players against this boss. Oh, they're, are they gonna be able to do it? Are they gonna try to go find someone else to help fill their group?
Exactly.
Are they, are they gonna look for a new person for the dungeon?
What's gonna happen?
I've been there.
Yeah.
That's not fun. But that is Elflines Online.
And are they gonna steal your loot cuz they rolled need? When they didn't need it? It's for a friend.
For a friend. There you go.
All right, I'll pick another one randomly. Let's do a raid. Was that a raid? No, that wasn't. That was a dungeon.
No, that was a, that was a dungeon. But it was, I think you do have to do that one. It's one of the ones you have to do to get, and stop me if you've heard this word before, listeners. This may bring back some dark memories.
Uh-oh.
Have to be attuned.
Oh, no. I don't even...
Sorry. I'm sorry for saying it.
Okay, so here we go. Twisted Elder Tree. This is a raid. Once you hit rank-ten, end-game raiding content opens up to you. Most elves aren't ready to jump right in the second they hit ten. You, of course, aren't most elves. Having followed my leveling guide, you already have access to Twisted Elder Tree, having completed Charred Grove.
Sorry, it's Charred Grove. That's how you get attuned for Twisted Elder Tree. I'm so sorry.
It's okay. It's okay. We'll forgive you this time. Once you have gathered six other members of your Elfline, talk to tree guardian Selina to begin the siege. So, without reading the rest, cuz there's more, there's already so much going on here. This means that your players have already played in Elflines. And you've had this in your back pocket. You're thinking, man, if we get through enough Elflines content, I can introduce this raid. So I gotta make sure my players get to level ten and they meet some people that they can group up with for this specific raid. Maybe IRL? Maybe they go to the afterlife and they meet a netrunner there? That's a good Elflines player and is a perfect recruit to hit this raid? You know, your whole campaign could revolve around being master Elflines player.
There is, there is an even funnier part.
Oh, here we go.
The funnier part is, if you don't wanna do early Elflines content, you can have your players just buy higher-level characters on the black market, and it doesn't cost that much money.
No. It doesn't. Pay-to-win. Pay-to-win.
Right, you could always pay to win to skip content.
It continues, it continues to tell you what kind of monsters will spawn. It'll say like defeat elite packs, and then you can use the bestiary basically from the original Elflines DLCs. One and two, and from this actual DLC as well. So combined, all of them together, you have enough monsters to throw at your players, no problem. At the end, the most valuable drop from this raid is the coveted Scarlet Blackbow, the only two raider fire bow in the game. If it drops, expect a loot argument to break out. Now imagine this. It drops, everybody's like, alright, it's gonna go to player A. He's in your group. And the NPC allies, one of them steals it and then logs out. And then you guys jack out, go to the real world, and you're like, I'm scouring Night City looking for this guy, and he's disappeared. That's a whole new adventure to go on, to try to get your Blackbow.
Track, track him down. Trade it back.
Yep, yep. Give it back to me. He sells it to an exec. That's what he did. Cuz the, this is the only content you can't get pay-to-win, is the Blackbow. You gotta work for the Blackbow.
Well...
Oh, no. Well, that's what I'm saying.
You can buy a completely kitted PvP elf.
But if you want the actual Scarlet Blackbow, you gotta get it from a player that you buy it from. So that's why that sleazy netrunner that you thought was your buddy.
No, it's not your buddy.
He's not your buddy. No.
You're gonna have to end up tracking down Carlos.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's how you can bring it back to cyberpunk.
True.
By betraying your players.
The funniest part about this is, while they're playing the game, you can have, like, you can interrupt them.
Yeah.
You can interrupt them in the middle of their Elflines Online mission with some sort of issue.
Mm-hmm.
And that can pull a player away from keyboard.
Oh, man.
Which is super funny. And the first time you do it, it'll be like, they'll, they'll, they'll break their mind.
Yeah.
It...
Oh, man.
It's not for the, the weak of heart.
I, I just got an idea where like, let's say one of your NPCs is like, yeah, I'll help you guys, but you know, I only have an hour, and then I gotta go for whatever reason. And then you're like, oh, it's only gonna take thirty minutes. It's fine. But thirty minutes in, he goes, guys, it got moved up. I gotta go in like five minutes.
Yeah.
And then like you keep rolling a D-ten. If he rolls a one or a two, the guy's wife comes in and says, F up, get up, we're getting out of here. So, that's, I could imagine that happening. I like that.
Yeah. You could have, you could have someone be attacked by like an Arasaka ninja sent to kill them in the middle of an Elflines raid.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're like, oh, wait, I gotta handle this.
Yep. Sorry, guys. You know how it is.
Can someone else tank?
Somebody else tank. I gotta fight a ninja.
You can, you can have a good time with it.
All right, should we talk a little bit about the bestiary or should we move on?
So I wanna just briefly go over some of this bestiary content.
Sure.
Let's, so, not, here's a cool other part. Is we have this bestiary, and we have these like little flavor-y nuggets that go with each of them. Which can, if you bring them out in conversation, can like really bring home the lore of the Elflands. Elflands loreheads, sign off in the comments. This is the lore nugget attached to the cursed head.
There we go.
Got out of Castlevania. Legend says that all of the warlock's first victims in Firsthold were beheaded at the mercy of dark magic. Their severed heads rose from the mass graves to serve the warlock as sentries for their army.
Ugh. That reminds me of Servo Skulls in Warhammer. Every time you see one, that used to be a dude, man. That used to be some person.
We have, we have our, we have unique enemies as well, like the Draglin. The results of the warlock's attempts to create an army to rule the Elflines by infusing the gremlins they captured with blood donated from the traitor dragon, Miasma Fire Chedal. Through the, though the experiment was a failure, the unstable dragon gremlin Chimera have served an important part of the warlock's army as equal parts infantry and artillery.
And artillery, oof. That's fun. Is that considered an elite enemy?
Um, so there are, so, you can fight Draglins that aren't elite, and then you can fight, if they are elite, then they have that elite, and then it'll tell you how to change the monster. So this one, when it's elite, they can reduce themselves to zero HP as an action. So they can blow up whenever they want. Which means they can do the run-in and blow up.
Yeah, cuz their ability is unstable, Chimera. When a Draglin reaches zero HP, they explode like an armor-piercing grenade centered on them. Oof. Oh, man, that's fun. I love that you're using, that he uses the Cyberpunk Red rule set in this world. It's so, it's so cool, man. I like that. So, yeah, and then looking at some other ones, like the Golem right under that, is...
Yeah.
It says elite, but it, it's special rule as being an elite is its armor is SP-13 head and body. Good luck killing that thing.
Yeah, it goes from seven to thirteen.
Wow. That's insane. Yeah, yeah, cuz it says armored Golem body, hmm, when it's elite. Interesting. So basically, all of these guys have an elite stat or an elite rule. If they're not elite, they don't get that special ability. If they are, so you can have like three Golems and one elite Golem as a pack, sitting in like a little room.
And there are boss versions, it's just that they're described in the descriptions of the raids and dungeons in which they show up. So, it'll further say in elite this, but with these changes.
Ah, gotcha.
So there are unique bosses.
Yeah. Interesting.
I'll read the Golem lore nugget because it was cool.
Yeah, do it.
After the warlock failed to create a perfect dragon gremlin hybrid, they turned their attention elsewhere, retreating into their tower on the Isle of the First Elves. After months of research, time which allowed the elves to regain a foothold on Arvish, the warlock succeeded in magically disassembling a Zazalith and reprogramming it to build larger constructs of itself using basalt from the neighboring island instead of difficult to source Zazalite. Thus, the first Golem was born.
Zaza-zoo, man. That's, that's cool. Zazalite. Man. But it's, that's, I've heard of Unobtanium, but Zazalite sounds way cooler.
Zazalite is cool. It's a, it's an in-universe... Sorry, I found an error in the document.
Yeah, that's fine, man.
We'll be fixing it.
There will be errata.
One of the, the cool parts about Zazalite is it's a mineral that acts as like an immune response in the Elflands. So underneath the earth, the miasma seeped into it. And then the Zazalite reacted, and Zazaliths popped out and tried to destroy the miasma source. But at that point, there was too much miasma, so they just all went crazy and ran around and started killing anything they saw.
Hmm, as you do.
So it's like, it's like the white blood cells of the land itself.
Oh, that's...
I think it's cool.
That is pretty cool. That is pretty cool. Well, guys, here it is. Elflines Online, Derek, Derek Sylar's Guide to Elflines Online. It is for the whopping price of zero dollars, zero euros, zero francs. It's free, ladies and gentlemen. Absolutely free. And you can get it...
You can pay if you want it in print.
Yeah, I mean, pay some. You can pay your friend. You can give your friend a dollar and then go download this from artelsoriongames.com. Downloadables and errata. DLC and errata, downloadable content and errata. It's on the top. It's one of the menu options. And there's that giant list of DLCs. Pick up Twelve Days of Gun Miss and Derek Sylar's Guide to Elflines Online.
I'm sure John John will put the link in the description.
Of course. The link is always gonna be in the description. I try my best, ladies and gentlemen. Wanna make sure that we get this content in your hands, cuz I'm just that type of guy. All right, James. Let's move on to some questions. The community has some questions for you. We went a little bit long with the DLCs today. But you know what? That's what happens when you're excited about something fun.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
So, this, this is just a product of our, of our love for the game. So let's see how many we can get through as quickly as possible. How about that?
Let's do it.
All right, first one comes from Nyliss Astalon. Can a tech fabricate an item that already exists in the book? Specifically, can they fabricate a vehicle upgrade?
So, you can, you can fabricate items that are in the book. That's what fabricate is for. But a vehicle upgrade is part of the upgrade skill, not the fabricate skill. So, it depends. If you're trying to... If you're trying to upgrade a vehicle, you use the upgrade skill. Part of maker. You don't use the, the other one.
But would you still need to have the parts to upgrade on? Like, what I mean is like, let's say it's, what's one of the vehicle ones? Like extra armor. We'll do the extra armor one. Actually, although is that Nomad Five? I don't think...
Yeah, that's Nomad Five. So it's not... You could invent an upgrade. You can invent an upgrade.
Bulletproof glass. How about that? Bulletproof glass. That's one of the ones, okay? Bulletproof glass. You don't have it lying around, but you have materials. You call your tech buddy. You tell your tech buddy, hey, make me some bulletproof glass because I need it for my car. So he fabricates one for the exact dimensions of your vehicle. Is that possible?
All right, let me, this, I believe I have touched on in the errata. The one exception is vehicle upgrades, which are treated as being 1,000 EB, very expensive for the purpose of upgrading. So what you wanna do is you wanna go to page two of the Cyberpunk Red errata available on our website, and your answer is there. I'll give you the full readout here, though, cuz I'm nice. Page 180, 148. Text was added to the second column, first paragraph under upgrade expertise. The paragraph now reads, "To upgrade an item, you roll tech plus the tech skill the item is typically repaired with, plus your up, plus your rank in this specialty, plus one D-ten. The tech must first purchase materials at the same price category of the item being upgraded, which installing the upgrade consumes. The DV roll against and the time it takes to install the upgrade is based on the price category of the item you're upgrading. The one exception is vehicle upgrades, which are treated as being 1,000 EB, very expensive for this purpose." That's it. That's an air parenthesis.
It's not you eating a burger.
No. Yeah. So, yes.
So the short answer is yes, you can do it, but it's gonna be a thousand eddies.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. Unless it's that Nomad Five one, which I'm guessing has to be more, right? You can't do just a thousand.
It says that you can't do the Nomad Five one, which means that you need to invent it yourself. So you need to invent that first and then upgrade.
Okay, so you can invent something that already exists in the book.
Yes, absolutely.
Gotcha. All right, sounds good. Moving on to the next one from Nyliss Astalon. Can a netrunner swap cyber decks during a netrun and does that reset the net architecture?
So, this is a great example of a... I might allow that as a tech upgrade. You know, like you have a deck and you have another deck, and you had a button and then it switches from this one to the other one. Oh, like a dual disc?
Yeah.
Some Yu-Gi-Oh action. However, no. Rules is written, if you wanna use a different cyber deck, you have to jack out, get the new cyber deck, jack back in.
Yeah. If I were to allow that for my player to switch between decks with like an upgrade, I might say on a D-ten, on a roll of a one, the, the switch disconnects, like there, it's faulty. And, and you get, and you're forcibly jacked out. So I hope there wasn't a bunch of black ice on your tail.
I, I might not do that personally. I'm, I would rather just have them, have it take up a hardware slot in each of the decks to be connected. That way, it's a tactical decision and they can't do it with really cheap decks. The problem I'd have with it was from a a great balance standpoint, is that I could then take two really cheap cyber decks, tape them together with my tech, and now I have a $5,000 cyber deck.
Yeah, now you have the heart of the cards, Yu.
Yeah, you, you need to, you need to, you know, pay the Shadow Realm. I don't remember much Yu-Gi-Oh.
That's all I know. All right. I promise you. And I just know Pot of Greed lets you draw a card in Blue Eyes White Dragon.
Lets you draw two cards. How do you not?
So there you go. So I didn't know that.
They explain it in every episode.
My anime card must be taken from me. All right, next question from Chumba Drak. Hey, man, next time you're interviewing the mayor of Balance Town, tell him that I totally dig Interface Red. Well, that's for you.
Yeah, great. Not a question. Thank you. I'm glad you like it.
I'm not done. I just wanted to pause so you can revel in it. I really like the magazine-style format. Also, ask him if we're going to get a sequel to Black Hand Street Weapons. Otherwise, hope you had a good turkey day and a great holiday and a cyber new year. That's, you know, was recent. I had a good turkey day.
Thank you for your question. So, Black Hand Street Weapons is something that we, we produced at the end of 2020. And that was to compile everything, all the guns into one thing. Partially because it was very unwieldy at that part in 2020 to actually figure out which weapons were which. A, are we gonna need to do that in this edition? No, we're not gonna need to do that in this edition, probably. However, are we going to make weapons, are we going to make supplements with lots of weapons in it? Yes, we are going to do that. But because of the way we're doing it, I mean, I can't take it off the... I can't take it off the table, one. But we're definitely making more weapons. we're definitely making more weapons. Um, if this was written during Turkey time, this question asker doesn't even know about 12 Days of Gun Miss yet.
This was well before it, yeah.
So proved you right.
Yeah, there you go. See, he was thinking about you.
Those are for you, buddy.
Alright, there you go, that's your answer. There's also uh, black chrome and rusted chrome that you guys announced. Black chromes come in, so stay tuned for that. Uh, Alliance, come on, Alliance, come on. Um, anyway. Uh, I digress. Next question, any ideas for campaigns that don't revolve around gangs or the typical cyberpunk story? This is from Thomas J. Howell. I love this kind of question.
Okay, I'm gonna immediately assume you don't want elves, so let's go for a normal answer that isn't play with elves. Because that's something that speaks to you, that you should do it, but let's um, no gangs and no, what else?
Uh, just the typical cyberpunk story is what I think. I think what uh, people usually think of when they do cyberpunk, it's like, go here, fight a bunch of guys, kill the main bad guy, gain street cred, get paid, kind of thing.
So one of my favorite things to do if you're um, if you're getting bored of these uh, of these um, street level stories um, that are the heart of cyberpunk. Um, you can go on a road trip. Um, something has to get somewhere else. Take this to Texas. Um, that's a great one. Um, you could get the 2020 book. Um, Land of the Free and Home of the Brave, I just skim them together and uh, come up with some cool encounters and you'd have a ton of fun doing that. Second thing you can do, be evil. Be super evil, um, sell out, uh, work for a corp. And then instead of gang-related stuff, it's, you get all this weird information, like we know he goes here, hears him on a security camera. Um, this is his mom's address. Go kill this guy. We don't know, we're not gonna tell you how to do it, you know, we're not micromanaging you, but we are going to macro manage. Um, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and if all they're giving you is the guy's mom's house, what do you think the players are gonna do?
Yeah, yeah, and also remember uh, you know, killing somebody is valuable if someone has a price on their head. But so is information, data, uh, you know, shipments of items, old tech, new tech. There's a bunch of stuff that makes, think about, anytime I wanna think about something out of the box, I always zoom out on cyberpunk. I just go as far out as I can, and if you go even further out, you'll be in near orbit and you can do stuff with the high riders and stuff like that. But I think to myself, what is, what is it like living in this city? What's it like for the average person? Going to a coffee shop, going to work, what's their routine? I try to think of it in my head. What do they do differently than what we do today? And that can give you inspiration on how people survive in Night City. That, you know, the average person isn't going around trying to kill gangs, that's a death sentence. You know, but as an edge runner, you're kind of living in both worlds. You're living in the civilian life and you're living in the dangerous life. So that I, I think try to explore those aspects as well.
So, and that's what you can do. Um. I wanna talk a little bit about how you can do. Uh, make it personal, uh, go to those life paths, make sure your players have rolled their life paths. I just say that cuz there are GMs that forget about it, either it's their first session and they just wanna get to the action, and I understand that. But if you're going on your third game and your players haven't rolled their life paths, you're making things more difficult for yourself. Um, and your players kind of want to roll their life paths, even if they don't say they do.
Yep, exactly.
You know, cuz there's this um, how do I put it? This is a GM only field, so you haven't GM, you might not grok this. Um, if you're just a player, there's this innate need to like protect one's character in a small box. That's why people, some people like to play orphans in D and D, for example, cuz then you can't hurt my parents. Um, in cyberpunk, their parents, their siblings, their girlfriend, boyfriend. Um, those are just great story tools and um, if you, the more you bring them into the narrative, the stop they, it'll stop them from feeling like all I do is kill people.
Yeah.
Um, and it's with them that you'll be able to give them the true cyberpunk experience, which is not just shootouts and whatnot. It's a expression of um, a high-tech, low-life, and there does have to be life in there.
Yeah, yeah.
In order to get that.
Yeah, the life path has always been a great way to connect your players to a plot hook that you know that they're gonna bite on because why wouldn't they bite on it? I mean, it has everything to do with them. You know, let's do a little thought experiment here, just to show you guys how easy it is. Uh, I'm using the Cyberpunk Red Companion app. You guys can find it, it's, it's an amazing, it's literally on my phone. And going to my agent and my contacts for my netrunner character. Uh, I have an enemy, Alin Urena, she's a government official. She's my enemy. What caused it? She was, uh, one of you was a business rival. Okay, so one of us was a rival in business, she's a government official. Uh, what can they throw at you just themselves and a close friend? What are you or they gonna do about it? Set out to murder or maim them. So this enemy is out for your blood, is a government official, was a business rival of yours, and has a close confidant and friend that will join them in killing you, you know, not just murder or maim, so that means, you know, in heavily injured or dead. So tell me, James, what can we do with this character to connect or make a campaign idea?
Well, immediately off the top of my head, I thought, this is what office politics is in the dark future. Um, this person, uh, you know, every year, this is a, this is a great narrative for if you're doing a, a corp game. Every year, these big corporations decide their budgets. And if it's a year where the budget is going down, that comes out of somebody's budget. Somebody's pie is shrinking. And why? Well, it might be for any number of reasons, but it could be something that they think was because of you.
Mm-hmm.
And that does not make them happy. Um, and maybe they think that if you weren't there, next year might be different. Maybe they're vengeful. Maybe they're vengeful and they have a friend. And this is their first job out of being a government official, so they, they went, they did the government to corporation pipeline, right? And uh, and now they're like, I can't do it directly, but I have a friend that I can send at him, and there you got your adventure.
There you go. Uh, I would say, I, I love that, that's hundred percent. You could have sessions and sessions of fun with that, hours and hours. What if Alina Orenna, let's say I work for Biotechnica, right? I'm an exec, I wanna get dirt on one of my coworkers. So I go to a government official, somebody that works at the DMV or something. And it's Alina Orenna, she has her own uh, accomplice as well, they work together. They get dirt on people and they sell it to corpos. Well, these corpos, they stopped coming around, they stopped showing up, you know, maybe one after another, it's been weeks, it's been months. Five, six, seven different clients have stopped showing up. Word on the street is, they found some netrunner kid, this gonk is accessing the same database that I have, the same credentials that I use. And he's getting my information and selling it to them for a cheaper price, undercutting me. I can't have that, this is my business, this is how I make money. The DMV doesn't pay well enough, so me and my accomplice need to find this netrunner and take him out of the picture. Boom.
There you go.
That's it. So I would definitely say go to the life path and do that. Mr. J. Howell, Thomas J. Howell. Let's do uh, one more and uh, we'll end it on that.
Uh, this is. Give me a, give me a juicy one, give me like a, like a existential question.
Well.
Here, I don't wanna. Give me something big. The last question, send it out.
I think this is a good one because it's interesting, okay?
Hit me with it.
How do you handle netrunning outside of combat? This is from Leonam Von Borowski. I, I think I said your name correctly, I think it's Polish. I apologize if I did it.
That's a, that's a good one. So there are GMs that are like, okay, we're out of combat, that means that we'll just say you netran.
Yep.
I'm not a fan of that.
Me neither.
Um, the reason is, is because, think about that from the player's perspective. They're here to play a netrunner. That's their star moment. Um, it was their scene and you cut to black. That was their scene in the movie. Um, so I'm, I'm of the opinion that if you are netrunning, you're using the netrunning rules. Um, and honestly, that running is fast now.
Yeah, three seconds, one round is three seconds, right?
Back in the day, it was not fast.
No.
And I might have been in the other camp of the, and treated it more like, oh, you're, you're a character with a lot of story power, like a rock boy. But nowadays, that running's fast. That's what they built the character to do, and even if um, it's a quick net run, they still can lose programs, they can lose their life. Um.
Set off alarms.
They can set off alarms. Um. Um, I would say, if you're having the problem of they're netrunning for no reason, they wanna hack everything.
Mm-hmm.
That, what the player is telling you, this is like relationship advice. What that player is telling you is, I need, I want to affect the narrative. It's a Schrodinger's cat type thing, right? Um. When you look for the narrative, you always find the narrative. Um, they should be unable to escape the train.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, it's, it's, it's the um, uh, the whole thing, oh, we're being railroaded. No, you've always been on the train. You've never once stepped off the train. Um, it's just sometimes I've been able to make it feel like it was your idea more often.
Mm-hmm.
And um.
Well, it is your.
Crazy text crawl thing, in which case more power to you, but um, I will say, Kate, then the thing that you're about to do, just to netrun and find a way to make it relevant to the plot or move the plot forward. Um, netrunning for no reason, um, can bog things down, um, so. If you um, if they are netrunning in a place where you really didn't wanna do a netrun right now, or it's like for some reason, you don't wanna say, nope, can't do that, have a really short net architecture with like a skunk. And have there be a control node that operates the soda machine.
Yeah, yeah, three floors, four floors max.
That feels like, oh, sometimes it really is just a soda machine.
Yeah.
Sometimes it really is a soda machine. It's not all like a government security mainframe disguised as a soda machine. Um. You know, sometimes it, it is just a soda machine.
Yeah.
Anyway, that, that's my, that's my opinion on that. Um, the other thing is, if you have a netrunner in your party, wow, that's a resource. The only thing better you could have had for that is having a media in your party. Um, treat that like, oh, wow, now I have, I have, treat it like a tool um, that you have to move the plot forward.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
Yeah, it's great. I love that. Great advice. Uh, the way I run it outside of combat is I still use the combat rules, but I do it in a special way, so uh, rules is written, you, every round of combat, you have a set amount of actions according to what your cyber interface, your interface level determines how good of a netrunner you are, so that means how fast you can do things in the net. So let's say you have three actions, that's like a normal starting character, you have three actions in the net in one round. So you wanna hack a computer, we're not in combat. After you do your three actions, I let you know, you start hearing footsteps down the hallway from a patrol. Do your next three actions. The footsteps are getting closer. So now, we're letting your other players know, like, hey, if this guy, if your netrunner needs more time, you better do something about this patrol that's coming, whatever it is, you figure it out, knock them out, talk to them, whatever you gotta do to try to figure things out. If the netrunner's like, no, no, I don't need any more time, I got it, this is it, I, I just need one more round and I got it. It adds this like tension going on. So you basically, i- it's the number one rule of cyberpunk is if your players are comfortable, make them uncomfortable. If they, if they're relaxed, make them feel on edge and feel like they can't trust them being relaxed, you know, always throw obstacles at them. Uh, that's how I would do it. So, you know, every, every three actions is a round, so every round, something, the obstacle gets closer, harder, worse, blah, blah, blah.
There's, there's one thing I wanna add to that. It's that, that's a great, that's great to sprinkle in. Um, I would say that scariest thing is when nothing is happening and everything seems like it's going fine. Because once you do that to them, you can terrorize them further with elements of uh, no, no, take another turn.
Yeah.
Take another turn.
Take your time.
Take your time. That will be uh.
Meanwhile, they're surrounding the building.
Right, right, right. It's the um, and then the, maybe the solo says, I wanna take a look out of the window, and that's them saying, wait, I wanna help with this narrative too.
Yeah.
Um, there's these uh, the things you can do where they're expecting you to tell them what the story is.
Mm-hmm.
And then you can say, no, everything's fine. And then maybe you can trick them into interacting more with the storyline.
Yeah.
Or trying to control it themselves. Um, and when it's, it's just a beautiful game when the GM is saying, oh, and these things happen, and then the players are fluidly building a story together. And anytime you can jumpstart that, that's good, especially in netrunning, cuz it can sometimes feel like the netrunner's time to shine. Some players will go, I have to go to the bathroom.
Yeah, exactly.
Which is unfortunate.
Yeah.
Um, and try to, you know, you know. If somebody always does that, maybe talk.
Yeah, and especially uh, when your players know they're not supposed to be somewhere and they're there and they're waiting for the netrunner to do their thing, the longer it goes on, the more they're like, man, we need to get out of here, like, I failed, I jacked out, uh, let me jack back in. It's like, oh my god, you're gonna start again from the beginning, okay? Looking out the window, looking out the hallway, oh my god, the tension is there.
Suspense, tension, that's, that's, those are golden rules.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. Just make sure you keep that going. If your players feel like, and if at any point it feels like it kind of stagnated, I've like retconned entire floors of my net architecture just cuz I'm playing it by ear and I'm like, alright, this is taking a little too long, longer than I wanted it to. So that lich that was on this floor is no longer there, it's now a control node, and then we're out of this whole thing, you know what I mean? Stuff like that. Be ready to make those kinds of decisions on the fly.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's it. Alright.
Question.
Yeah, I love it.
Last question.
That was it. Was it existential?
Holiday episode. It was, it was. dealt with a lot of big issues.
We did it, man, we did it, the holidays are here. It, it, we're, we're doing it. Um, ever since, since the last holidays, so many things have changed, you guys have released so many uh, DLCs, the Interface Red, Data Pack, Data Screen, pins, for god's sake, we have pins.
Pins are good.
And um. Yeah, go ahead.
You putting this up in a couple days? You think you'll put it up in time for the, the PAX Unplugged?
Uh, when is PAX?
PAX Unplugged starts on uh, Friday, I think.
Yeah, I'll try to have it out before Friday for sure.
Alright, so if you're at PAX Unplugged, um, I'll be at the Artel Story and Games booth, come say hi. Um, and uh, we're gonna have in the pins for sale there, in case you haven't picked them up yet, we're gonna have a bunch of product that, you know, it's a crazy time. Um, you know, in case you wanna, you know, take your destiny in your own hands and buy some Artel Story and Games products. Those are both the same thing, by the way.
Yeah, exactly.
Self-actualize with Artel Story and Games products. Um, otherwise, good luck.
Uh, you definitely wanna go to the Artel Story and Games booth because right next to them, you know, kissing neighbors is the Monster Fight Club booth. And they're gonna be demoing Combat Zone, you can play Combat Zone there, and they're gonna be probably demoing uh, the new Borderlands uh, skirmish game that they're working on, Mr. Torg's Badass Arena or something or other.
I assume that's what our partners are going to be doing.
Yeah.
Um.
I talked to John personally, he's gonna be there, so.
Cool.
Yeah.
There's some, there's also some winter fun to be had at the Artel Story and Games booth and um, other fun things, uh, I think there's a humble bundle on right now.
Oh yeah, there's a really good humble bundle.
Missing a 2020 book. This humble bundle will get you all of them. So don't worry, if, even if you're missing all of them, you're gonna be fine.
You could get a bunch for a dollar, but if you spend eighteen dollars minimum, you get thirty books, the entire bundle, and it's all of them. I just picked it up today.
Yeah, totally. Um, it's um, like, you can get night. Yeah, totally. Um, it's um, like, you can get Night City at the same time that you can get Home of the Free and Land of the Brave.
Yeah, we just talked about that.
Great setting books. We brought them up in this show. Um, you get Black Hands, look at all the cool um, gun pictures that we sifted through for gun miss.
There's the Firestorm books, Shock, Shockwave, Stormfront, the, those are, I believe they're adventures, right?
There's a, there's another one that's a really good, uh, Protect and Serve.
Yep, that's the.
Is like the cop book.
It's a lawman book, yeah, it's really good.
Lawman book. It's great. Uh, there's stuff in there that's about like how you get punished if you're a police officer that does this. Um, how you cannot get punished if you're a police officer that's still doing this.
Yep.
Um, it's, it's great, uh, especially if you've got a lawman and they're trying to figure out, uh, how do I interact with the NCPD? What's my position? Um, who's my boss? A lot of that stuff is still good, and you know, if you. If you take the same last name that was the uh, the head of the NCPD back then, you change the first name, it's their son. It's their daughter. There you go.
And they all have uh, they have their bookmarks.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, Listen Up, Listen Up Primitive Screwheads is in there. There's the two Raish Bart Boss books, Raish, Raish Bart Boss Guide to the Net. And Brainware Blowout. Brainware Blowout has uh, has rules for creating your own programs. You can kind of, you know, talk to your GM, tell him to look at it, tell them to look at it, see if they can maybe. Work it in. It's, it's not that hard. You just add intelligence and interface and, and you roll on like some kind of. Chart. You can try to make that work. Deep Space is in there. Deep Space.
Yeah, that's a good book. Um, if you're a tech and you, I think Euro, Eurosource.
Eurosource.
In there too, so.
And Eurotour.
And Eurotour, Eurotour is a great adventure. You can pretty easily um. Move it into red, um, since a lot of it is just cool locations and a cool thing. And one of the funniest things I thought is you could do Eurotour. As a revival tour of the original Eurotour from twenty twenty.
Nice.
You have them doing it again. Uh, maybe with some new bandmates, no spoilers.
Uh.
Um. But um. What else, what else, what else is good in there?
Dude, what else? Corp Report. It has all three Corp Reports in there. So you, you can learn about Arasaka, IE Lazarus, Militech, Petra Cam and Sovoil. And there's the Wild Side Book, which is the guide to the streets of cyberpunk, the guide. To figuring out how the streets run, what a fixer does to make a living. There's like really cool rules on how you can make contacts, contacts and stuff. I mean, it's just endless how much cool stuff you can get from the twenty twenty books.
Tons and tons of content.
Yeah.
Um. And uh, other than, I, I think if you're, if you're into the pin thing, we, we do have a. A convention exclusive pin. Uh.
Like these pins?
Like those, but different. This is a single pin that we're selling at uh, PAX Unplugged, so um.
Save me one.
That'll be fun. It doesn't, it doesn't have, it doesn't have rules on the back because we know it's exclusive and we would never do that to you.
True.
Um, but uh, it is a pretty cool depiction of the Zonda Cybercycle. Um, from the core rulebook.
Save me one.
I might, I might save you one, John John.
One, come on, I'm your favorite.
While you're editing this, so.
Yeah, exactly.
It's only right, it's only right.
Alright, dude, uh, James, thank you so much.
We've chilled enough.
It was enough.
It's time to get going.
Uh, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Um, James, thank you so much. I really appreciate everything you do for the community. And.
John, thank you for having me. Thank you for editing this. Thank you for compiling all these questions to make it easier for me to talk to the community. I appreciate you.
Hey, man, you are willing and I am willing to be a part of it, more than willing, honored to. Alright. For the mayor of Balance Town and myself, the city council is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Make sure you get your questions to johnjohnthewise@gmail.com so we can answer your questions in the future. Thank you all. Have a wonderful month. We'll see you guys next year.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Holidays, bye.